The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, we're cleared now by the, by the system that we can start the meeting. Well, good evening, everyone. It's, welcome to the village council meeting. It is January 18th, 2024. So this is our first meeting of the new year, and I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season. So it's kind of, let's get back to work, everybody, right? So with that, I'll ask everyone to please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance. All right, I'm glad to see that we got the right placement for the screens. That gives us a little more room up there. Everybody okay? And we have our old microphones back, and so we can turn them on and off ourselves. So we're moving forward at the new digs, okay? Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present this evening.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And we're going to start the evening off with a very important presentation by the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency on the Vision 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan. So come up and join us. You know that we do hold a seat on that board. I, myself and Councilman Amera try to make all the meetings and stay on top of what's going on. But floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for accepting our invitation, or our self-invitation, I should say, to come out and present this item to you. So my name is Nathan George. I am the Long Range Transportation Plan Coordinator for Palm Beach TPA, which is the transportation planning agency for this region. Going to walk you through a quick presentation. Hopefully, that's up on your screen.
One question. Just want to confirm something. I know a few months ago, you, it was announced that you were going to be doing kind of a roadshow, going to all the cities. Are we the first?
You are the first for the Long Range Transportation Plan component.
That's, okay.
And we have additional meetings that were done for the transit component, which we call the mobility business.
We like being first, and thanks.
So you are number one.
Some things.
Yes. And we're in the informational phase of this project, developing an update to what we have as the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan. So I'll walk you through, it's a really brief presentation, just to give you some general information. This is more or less a notification that we're also going to be coming back to the community. We're going to have our first public workshop that I will highlight later on in the presentation. And I can confirm, okay, my presentation is up. So I'll walk you through. So a little bit about the TPA. For anybody who's not familiar with us, we're a small, mighty, and lean staff of 16 that works on transportation planning here in Palm Beach County. We are charged with planning and prioritizing federal transportation investments in our region, but we also capture a lot of additional investments that are made locally or that are done through state funds. So we really are a clearinghouse for all transportation investments in our region. We also are trying to help bring more discretionary funding to this region, which is a really exciting opportunity with all the federal dollars that are being spent through the bipartisan infrastructure law. So that's a big part of our charge. Mayor Pinto mentioned that he sits on our board, and Jeff Bear also is, joins us. So I see both of them at our meetings pretty regularly, and we talk a lot about transportation. So we are incredibly appreciative to have their voice chaired at our board. We started this process going out to the public, just like we're about to do with, you know, this more robust engagement process we're getting ready to undertake. But we started with a, you know, survey, looking at what are the existing, what do people feel like we need to be focusing on in the region? So we polled not only looking at transportation, but broader needs across the region. So we developed a statistically significant survey to look at what are some of those demands. And I wanted to highlight a few of the themes, not to go through the full survey. One of the big issues that we heard was affordability. So housing and transportation affordability, both are very important issues as we see costs going up all across the board, from projects to just cost of living. And of course, with the housing bond that was passed here in Palm Beach County, that was front of mind at the time we did the survey, middle of last year. So that was certainly something that we heard a lot of focus on, and we're focused on trying to use transportation as one of those levers that will improve affordability in our region. We also heard a lot about all ages and abilities. So that's the idea that we want to have good schools, we want to have a good quality of life for folks as they enter their later years of retirement. And then another theme that was really important to folks was protecting our environment. Resilience is certainly an important aspect of how we address transportation and the built environment in our region. So that was another theme that came through in the survey. And these are themes that we're reflecting on as we start to look at our transportation needs. We don't just look at transportation at the county level. We also participate in Southeast Florida's planning for transportation. So the three MPOs work together collectively to look at transportation needs, all from Miami-Dade North, because we are one unified area. And we also share similar challenges as you look at development that's occurred in this area. So we're bounded by Everglades and the water in the Atlantic Ocean. So we only have so much space that we can grow out to. We're kind of starting to build out, so now we're entering a build-up phase. We're also growing in this region, and I'm sure, I don't have to tell any of you, but you all understand, we're an incredibly popular place to live. I came from outside of this area. I'm sure many other folks did as well. So as we reflect on that palette, this is where we're trying to paint our pretty picture. We have to balance these competing needs. We've got growth, and that brings with it congestion. We're trying to balance that out with different transportation options and services. And I would argue that historically in transportation, we've often put a lot of our emphasis on congestion and how to mitigate congestion, which makes it more difficult to balance out with other options, like transit, or using on-demand, or walk-and-bike type interventions. It really makes it a lot more difficult to balance out the pendulum. So that's the challenge we have as we are receiving 12,000 people per year in this county, growing to 1.8 million people by 2050, which is the horizon here of our plan. The plan itself, as I just mentioned, it's a 25-year horizon. We are required by the federal government to update and adopt these plans every five years. So this plan needs to be adopted in December of this year, 2024. The plan feeds into our initial term of investments, what we call the Transportation Improvement Plan, or TIP. That's the first five years of the plan. Currently, that represents a $4.1 billion investment of federal funds in our region. And then I included this four-step process, but basically, we go through identifying what our goals are going to be, identify what projects we're going to use to achieve those goals, and then we establish our implementation approach. And that's the process we're working through right now. Our goals are the North Star for the plan, so this is how we measure the projects that we're considering and how they may or may not be successful. So we have five goals. They are the TPA goals, and we carry them forward in this plan. So it's safe, efficient, connected, multimodal, and resilient. And we've used those goals to, we're in the process of using those goals to screen all of the projects that have come in through our local project submittals. So agencies like yours have submitted their requests to include projects in this plan. And we did receive submittals from Royal Palm Beach, so we appreciate your staff's response to that call for projects. We're measuring projects against these goals to see how they will benefit the region. Our timeline, we started the process in January of last year. We need to complete by December of this year. So we started out with that goal-setting process in the summer of last year. We completed the call for projects through fall and concluded that in December. We're currently in the needs assessment phase, which is where we take the projects we've received, combine those with an assessment of needs across the region. So maybe things that weren't included by our locals in that project submission. Start to weigh everything out, and eventually, we run through a process of identifying what we can do that's cost feasible. So that's our budget and implementation, or the balancing exercise. What can we do? The really exciting part of the development of this plan is that we're going to identify what we can fund, and then we're also going to identify what we would like to fund but don't have money for. Those are the illustrative needs in our region. So we might identify projects that we don't have financing for, but we could potentially fund them through discretionary grant programs, or through others, funding sources, whatever gets identified down the road. So that's a really exciting opportunity to use this plan, to hopefully bring in some additional outside funding to our region. This is just a general page for anybody who's watching online. You can scan the QR code or go to palmbeachtpa.org/lrtp, and that will give you all the most up-to-date information about this plan and the process we're working through. There's a sign up there where you can put in your email address and stay up to date as we work through the process. I'm here because of the engagement part of the process. The engage with us that's on here highlighted is LRTP Workshop, which I'll show you in just a moment. We also have a transportation survey. It's a boiled-down, you know, kind of a shorter version of that statistically significant survey that folks can take and share their input. And there's also a comment map. That's an opportunity for folks who can't submit projects on their own behalf, but they see challenges in their community. They can go to that comment map and say, "I have a hard time crossing the street here," or "I wish there was a bus stop there." So it's an opportunity that you can provide that input. It helps us to identify some of those needs that may not bubble up through the, you know, through that process of local project submittals and staff review. So that's the best opportunity right now for folks to engage. As we get later in the process, folks will be able to provide their input on specific projects and in the plan itself. And then this last point is really a message to our audience, to speak with you, because we want folks to be talking with their locals. If they're not, if your constituents are not talking with this body, then you can't share their observations with us. So it's really important to have that dialogue. We hear the best input from our members on our board or our committees. The LRTP Workshop's going to be next week, so we're going to be out January 26th from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Royal Palm Beach Library, just across the street. So that'll be a great opportunity that anybody who wants to can come out and join us. We do have, I forget what we use, SignUp Genius, or, you know, we have some way that folks can go and register that they'll be attending, so that's linked on the page. This is circulating now on social media, so our ask of you is if you could, please boost that opportunity, make sure that the message gets redistributed around your community, trying to encourage folks to come out and share their voices, or go to the website and provide that input at their leisure. We certainly welcome input in any form. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you again for the time and opportunity to come out and present, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
We thank you for coming. Any members on council have questions?
I just, real quick is, and thank you very much. I believe, so there's that annual presentation that they do with the three counties, and is it, this year is it in Broward?
I am sorry. I don't know what, where that presentation would be given.
Tri-county committee?
Tri-county committee, yeah. Is that one in?
I'm not sure where the next one is.
Okay, because they do rotate it. And is that?
It will be posted on the, on TPA website.
Okay. And is that an opportunity then for residents to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If they want to, okay?
Thanks. Thank you.
So how successful have your, your public outreach?
I would say, right now, we've, we've had a handful of workshops, and we had a tremendous amount of input on the survey that we posted. So we did this statistically significant survey through a consultant, and then we posted on the website and had something like 550 people respond, which is, you know, fairly good for just being on our website. We're really at the first stage of getting a more in-the-community public engagement. So I'd say, I don't really have much to share in terms of that process yet. It's going to be a, a race to the finish, to get out in the community. And we'll, we're going to have multiple phases of conversations with the public. So after this introductory period where folks can provide more general input, we'll have the opportunity, while we're reviewing projects and developing what, what projects will go into the plan, so what we call a cost feasible, or what's, what we expect to be funded out of the plan. There will be that process. And then when we get towards the end, when we're documenting, there'll be another opportunity to review what the proposed plan looks like, provide input on that as well. So there's sort of three phases that we'll be completing in 2024 before adoption. So it'll be a pretty intense outreach.
Do you actually walk the people who attend through the plan as it stands at that moment in time and ask them for suggestions?
Correct. And it's, it's, I would say, for the public, a lot of, it's going to be the opportunity to provide that input of, do you support what you see? Do you have reluctance or reservation about what's being discussed in the plan? We're really relying on, we will need to rely on our partners to have the support to carry projects forward, because TPA is the metropolitan planning organization. We don't take the projects and carry them forward. So it's really the locals that sponsor the projects, having the, the will to, you know, implement. Or FDOT, because a lot of projects in this region are FDOT implemented. But I would say, folks, as they're providing their input, when we get later in, into the process, it's really going to be, they'll be demonstrating support or reservation that would influence your support for a project and whether you're willing to continue to sponsor it. So it really gives us that opportunity to, to have the public engagement and input that would support whether a project should continue, or maybe we need to revisit, is it appropriately scoped, or is it not appropriate in the plan?
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
From your presentation, I, I got, it looked like there was a link in there. So if there's an issue in our community, because I have had complaints, concerns, and I've experienced them myself about a particular intersection in the village, just go on there and say, "Hey, this is an issue. Could you look at helping us out here?"
That's a very excellent question, because I would say that's one of the challenges we have as an MPO and not a maintaining agency. So when you go to the comment map, that, if we're receiving a comment that is planning in nature, so I'm having a challenge that isn't something that can be immediately resolved, it's not like a maintenance need, and it's something that I can?
No, it'll have to be, it'll have to be a project with money allocated and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, right, exactly. So if it can turn into a project, that's the kind of input that goes into the comment map. That's fantastic. It helps us inform the project. We also are linking over to the county's site, where they have their, their tool to report complaints or comments, and that can?
Excellent.
That at least provides that close, you know, the loop to get people back, where if they have a more immediate need, box busted, somebody's not picking up the trash, anything like that, we're making sure to redirect folks so they can get more immediate attention. But the planning-type comments, yes, we were very happy to receive those, and I would encourage everybody to be submitting comments.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Nathan, for this presentation. I appreciate it. In terms of participation, what's, what's the sweet spot? What's the number that would make this very meaningful for the TPA?
In terms of the immediate meeting that we're going to have, I'll be happy if I have eight to 10 people show up, but certainly, the more people we can have in, in our outreach meetings, the better. It's incredibly challenging as an MPO to get folks really excited, because I'm working on a plan that's 25 years into the future. So that is incredibly difficult, I would say. And that's why we're trying to focus a lot on digital tools that allow folks to engage with us, you know, anytime, at their own convenience, in their own home. We're also focusing on going to the community and meeting folks where they are. So we're having meetings that are at TPA's office in downtown West Palm Beach, and we will have some very specific meetings that are, you know, later in the process, the workshops, when we talk about the, the projects that go into the plan, and hopefully, those will be a little bit better attended. We're focused on trying to saturate the community, if you will, and get out, so eight to 10 people, and maybe we come back here two or three times. We can get a lot of folks as we, you know, have that high saturation rate across the entire county. So that's the focus.
Gotcha. That's awesome. This might be a question that's in the weeds, but I have to ask it. The goals that you mentioned all made sense to me, but what, how do you quantify resilient?
Ooh, that's interesting. So the goals, what I, I didn't get in the weeds with the goals, and what we did was broke them down to goals, objectives, strategies, and measures. We took each of those goals and identified measurable ways that we can improve things like resilience, or, that's the specific question you asked. So resilience might be reducing coastal inundation, or flood events, where you might have a road go underwater during, during like a, a non-traditional flood event.
Gotcha.
You know, high rain concentration. So we, we have a number of objectives, and that's posted on the website. So if you go to the website, you'll see those boards that we posted. It's probably the most detailed and boring read you would ever have, because it's three boards that talk about how the, each of these goals are supported by objectives and strategies. And, yeah, it's basically just, we had to identify different tools that would potentially improve things like resilience. So it's EV infrastructure, and supporting electrification, reducing carbon emissions, things like that, that are, you know, maybe not always super popular, but they are certainly, there are tools that we have that we can improve that.
That's cool. It's very interesting to me, so I'll geek out on it. It'll be good.
I, I will be happy to answer any questions you have after you do that. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Well, we thank you again for coming here this evening, and I'm, I'm very confident. I think you're going to get a tremendous amount of feedback across the county with your tour and, and the workshops you're going to be holding. And I, and I think what that will ultimately provide is a much richer base of, of information and perspectives and insights from our community across the county on our transportation issues and needs. So thank you again for coming.
Well, thank you all for having me, and appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to now move to reports, and I'm going to ask Selina if she wants to start.
Good evening, everyone. Councilwoman Roduski and I had the pleasure of traveling up to Tallahassee for Palm Beach County Day, so I'm just going to give a brief update, because I don't want to duplicate our, our reports. So first of all, thank you very much, Rana Brown, over at Ron Book's office, and Palm Beach County Fire Rescue for the escort. So it made things a lot easier this trip, so thank you very much. We had the opportunity of meeting with Commissioner Wilton Simpson with the Department of Agriculture, and one thing that we talked about was land that's being purchased by foreign entities and agriculture that is not being preserved. So one thing that we can look to is Rural and Family Lands Protection Program, and that protects our ag lands. So that's something that the state's working on. We had the, we were able to meet with Stephen Fielder, who's with CFO Patronus's office, and we talked about MySafeFlorida. So this is a program that the state is doing. It is where they give you up to $10,000 in matching grant money for hurricane preparedness for your home, so windows, doors, roofs. They have, and I was going to ask our attorney, I apologize, I didn't ask you ahead of time, because I think they were looking for additional money to go through that was in the budget that they're waiting on. So if you want, you can go to mysafeflhome.com. You can register, they will come out and do an inspection, so at least you've done that process, and then when there's funding available, they will let you know, and then you can go to the next step. But they're, they don't have any money in there right now. That's what they're looking for in this session. So I'll ask you about that later.
About giving them money?
About, well, if we have, if it's been approved yet, that's what I was waiting for.
Yeah, that's fine.
Also, yeah, thanks. Also, with the CFO's office, we met with Tasha Carter, and she's the insurance consumer advocate. So we talked about that there are six new insurance companies coming to the state of Florida, so that will help homeowners. We talked about Senate Bill 76, which is paying claims timely and fairly, so things aren't held up. But those people who are making false claims, that those are watched so that it doesn't take money out of the bucket for others. There is a grant for lower-income seniors that they can apply for. And thank you very much for State Representative Rick Roth and Senator Gail Harrell, who put forth the two funding initiatives that we're looking for. So it was a really good, short, but productive trip.
Question, when the six insurance companies coming to the state, what's the timeline on that, and when will our residents really begin to get some relief here?
So I think she said there's two of them that have gone through the process, the other four they're waiting on. And then I asked them specifically, because for instance, like with citizens, if your home is a certain age old, that citizens will insure you now, but others will not. And she said, no, that everybody will be eligible to apply for that. And I think that we talked about other funding options as well, so different things that they're talking about, because it is becoming an issue where some people have to leave their homes, because absolutely. Tomorrow night, over at Commons Park, we have a food truck and concert. Crazy Fingers is playing, they're a Grateful Dead cover band, starting at 7:00. We have the Green Market and Bazaar right outside on Saturdays, starting up at 9:00 in the morning. We have Westfest coming up, so very excited that that's again this year. Friday, February 16th through Sunday, the 18th. Thank you very much to the Central and Hispanic Chambers of Commerce for putting on the holiday party again for us. It seems like it's been forever, but that was in December. We haven't been back since then. And thank you very much to CAFSI again for presenting the 22nd Annual Martin Luther King Celebration that we all attended on Monday. And that completes my report.
Okay, Richard.
I'm just happy to hear Selina had a nice trip to Tallahassee. I hope she, uh?
Very short, so it was enjoyable.
Goes back a little more, better than the football game result for you, though, I guess. I, I'd like to thank, since it's been a while since December, we did have our Winterfest over at Commons, and it was a success. I saw tons of people there, and when I left, there were still people being turned away because we were apparently over capacity. So hopefully, you know, I know it's a recurring problem, but, you know, I appreciate the work everyone from Parks and Recs and the Sheriff's Office did in, you know, keeping a safe environment. And it was a great festival, and then, as Selina said, the MLK Day on, on Monday was fabulous, and I really appreciate all the hard work CAFSI does, and Judge Roe gave a wonderful keynote speech. So I appreciate her dedicating her time to come speak to us. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
So yes, definitely, that, that time of year with Tallahassee on everybody's radar, which is probably better than us on their radar. But the Florida Legislative, Florida League of Cities has their Legislative Action Days planned for January 29th, 30th, and 31st. So we're going to be spending a little more time up there, and be further into the session, and have a, a good sense of what's, what's coming up, what we need to deal with. We're always in the defensive mode, pushing back to maintain our authority to decide. Home rule, really important. And there are always the bills that come up that seek to decide for us at that level. So that's primarily one of the, the objectives of the Florida League of Cities lobbying team, which is, is pretty outstanding. So we'll be doing three days' worth of that come the end of the month. And every Monday, you know, there's a 9:00 call in, and, and it's just a matter of getting on the phone and listening to what the breaking news is coming out of committee meetings and over the weekend and that type of thing, and that's one way to stay up with it, as well as a weekly newsletter that's called On Tap at the Cap. And, yeah, it's, in addition to a catchy title, it also has some pretty good information, and it's breaking news, and then there are always the calls to action, where we get the information we need, and we also get told who we need to communicate with on the committees and that type of thing, to get support for the things we want support for and opposition for the things we don't want to see come to fruition. So it's a busy year, always, always is a busy time, that's, that's for sure. One of the things I wanted to mention was an experience that, that Carolyn and I had on Saturday morning, which was a very unfortunate thing. Our next-door neighbor passed away suddenly. And what I got to see was the first responders in action. And I got to tell you, I am so impressed, and I'd say this if you guys weren't even sitting there, and I think Rick is back here, too. I was so impressed with all of the first responders that showed up, the EMT, the sheriff's deputies, they all knew how to do what needed to be done, to provide advice, but most importantly, the compassion was there. It was significant. I mean, we sat there with our neighbor as, as she was going through this experience, which is absolutely horrific. And I can tell you, if it wasn't for that kind of professionalism and compassion, it would have been a lot more difficult and a lot more traumatic. So thank you all for what you do. We'll get to see it firsthand. And, let's see, I think I wanted to mention one other thing. Well, actually, no. I was going to mention, oh, yeah, there is one other thing. Here it is. So some of you all know that we have had a temporary homeless shelter over at South Florida Fairgrounds for, I guess, a couple of years now, maybe three years.
At least it'll go on three years.
Yeah. So the really good news is, the county has been very, very engaged with us in the immediate area. Once a month, they were holding meetings to hear from their residents about any concerns that having the homeless shelter that close to Royal Palm Beach might be generating. And we had the last one this month, because the new Lewis Homeless Shelter is going to be opening up on Monday, January 29th at 11:00 a.m., so they're going to be doing a ribbon-cutting on that. And it's in Palm Springs on Lake Worth Road, and so everybody's invited to attend that. That's, that is good news for so many reasons, but I really do appreciate the fact that the county stayed engaged with us and was listening as, as we went through this temporary period of time, and I think this will be a great asset to us. Thank you.
That's good news.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. Speaking of the fair, it is the fair time, open until January 28th, so get there, but I would just want to say thank you to the trustees and the donors who can- I would just wanna say thank you to the trustees and the donors who contributed to the scholarship program. We have three Royal Palm High School students who were awarded scholarships on Sunday, and I had the pleasure of helping present to them. So, Nirvani Balkaran, who is studying sports medicine, she received a scholarship, as did Keegan Henderson, who wants to create his own neuro lab and study dementia, very important to me. And then Tyler Wink, who wants to become a lawyer. All three are residents of Royal Palm, so congratulations to all of them for their hard work.
Outstanding. Okay. Ray.
No report, Mayor, thank you. Also, no report tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Then that will cover our reports. At this time, if there anyone here who wants to provide a petition for the council, now it's me, the time. Seeing none, I'm closing the floor then to petitions for this evening. And now, we get to statements from the public. I have a, a comment card here for items not on the agenda from Stephanie Siderman. Did I pronounce that right? Where is she? Is she here? Did she leave?
No, I think she was.
She was the one sitting there?
Yeah, she might just need a minute.
Okay. I'll come back to her when she gets back then, unless she can, that's okay. Diane, why don't you present us with the consent agenda? Before you do that, do we have any advance questions from the public?
No, Mayor.
On any items on the consent agenda?
I have not received any.
Ray, do you have any, one with their hand raised?
No.
Comments on the consent agenda? Any luck?
I can hear you.
Okay. Why don't we give her, we'll give her, we'll give her a minute, see if she can get in. We haven't, we haven't keyed up our new commercials for 2024 yet, otherwise I'd break for commercial, but.
Do song and dance?
No, no song and dance, no, no, no.
I have some stories about.
Huh?
I hear the door.
Come on down. I've already introduced you, Stephanie. Did I pronounce your last name properly? Siderman?
Excuse me?
Your last name is Siderman, okay.
That's down, a little further down. Perfect. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Siderman, and I am a representative of the National Council of Jewish Women here in Palm Beach. It is an organization that strives for social justice by improving the lives of women, children, and families. January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I'll be providing information on the issue of labor and sex trafficking of minors and the recurrence of sex extortion. Human trafficking is a modern form of slavery and includes those who are forced, coerced, or tricked into providing labor and sexual services. Florida is ranked number three in the nation on reports of human trafficking, and Southeast Florida is one of the top three regions in the state with the highest number of reports of the trafficking of minors. In Palm Beach County during 2021, there were 64 known reports, 50 reports of commercial sexual exploitation, and 40 reports of labor trafficking of minors. Traffickers seek minors in schools, homeless shelters, parks, malls, and many other places, including the internet through social media and various apps such as gaming apps. They seek out vulnerable children, those who are poor, homeless, have been abused, living in foster or group homes, members of the LGBTQIA+ community. They offer them friendship, food, shelter, and gifts. They isolate the victim from family and friends, and when the minor is totally dependent, the predator forces them to provide sexual and labor services. Sex extortion is a form of internet blackmail. The predator gains a minor's trust, often posing as an attractive or empathetic member of the same or opposite sex, by entering into a friendly communication on the internet that eventually leads to the request for and receipt of pictures or videos of the minor that are of a sexual nature. When the minor refuses to comply anymore, the predator threatens to distribute their private and sensitive material and/or harm their friends and family by using information they have already obtained from the victim's electronic devices, iPads, computers, iPhones. The minor can become terrified, ashamed, unable to handle the stress of the situation, and unfortunately, all too often leads to suicide. The National Council of Jewish Women is reaching out to elected officials, residents and persons working with or in contact with minors, especially those in high school, both males and females, of the Royal Palm Beach, to educate them about the signs that a child may be a victim of trafficking or sex extortion, and hopefully to become that trusted adult that the minor can turn to before making some irreversible decisions. I want to thank Mayor Pinto, Vice Mayor Raduski, and council members for the opportunity to speak today. We would be happy to work with you to make sure that all can be done to prevent these tragedies to our youth here in Royal Palm Beach. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for that, that very serious information. Do you have any statistics on closure, catching the people who are doing this, what that's been?
No, but also.
Can you have the numbers on what was reported?
Those are, I do not have those exact numbers, but also realize when I spoke about incidents in 2021 here in Palm Beach, I stressed the word "known reports."
Yeah.
There are so many reports.
But there's no data available for '22 or '23 yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, I understand that, I, we deal with that, too. How, what is your approach to, to reach out to the local school personnel that you mentioned?
Okay. We, there are, there, Palm Beach County has a human trafficking unit and department that mainly go to the public schools. We, as a nonprofit organization, reach out to other entities such as city and town councils. We reach out to charter schools. We've reached out to some of the recreation and community centers here in Palm Beach, just to educate those who are, you know, in contact with minors or work with minors about what's going on.
Okay. Well, any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do you have tips for the public on how to identify maybe a situation, and what should they do in that situation if they see something that doesn't seem right?
Okay. You're asking for my 60-minute training.
Program for that, right?
Yes, no, what we do, we are advocates, and we are educators, so we will go, you know, to your specific facility or to your group, and it's all free, and talk to you about what are the signs that a child may be victimized, what are the signs of a predator? You know, oftentimes, they use various techniques to, you know, get the minor to trust them and build that trust before exposing them to the sex or labor trafficking, or, like I said, sex extortion over the internet. As far as some of the things to look for in a child, a child who during a football game, a soccer game, is constantly on their phone, I know that's difficult because a lot of kids start their phone all the time anyway, but if they're a player and they're standing on the sidelines on the phone all the time, a child all of a sudden now who is very active in a swim team or volunteers to do things, all of a sudden is not volunteering, you may notice a change in their personality. Their interaction with friends, they may be shying away, so it's just, just quite, just observing the minor in, within the realm of your interaction with them, are they different? Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're being victimized, but it may mean something else is going on that is causing this change in their personality and behavior. So, that's one aspect of it. The other aspect, we speak to adults, what can you do? How do you become that trusted adult that that minor feels comfortable going to without fear of retribution or punishment? And that's also something that we talk about.
Is there a way for people to get these trainings, like, can you share a link, or?
Yes. We have, I brought some brochures, excuse me. What you can do is you can go online, www, excuse me, www.ncjwpalmbeach.org, and let me give you a phone number, it's 561-790-7440. I have some pamphlets and flyers, if I can just leave them with you before I leave? Okay. Distribute, if anyone has any questions, please feel to contact us, and we'll be more than happy to work with you.
Don't thank any other, go ahead.
Are you typically, because to me, a lot of it, the first level of defense should be parents, do you go to PTAs and parent groups? Because, you know, unfortunately, I've seen some of this stuff in some of the cases that I handle at the Attorney General's Office, and ever since my children were very young, I've basically read them the riot act and what is and is not allowed, and what you can and can't take pictures of, and those devices are not your devices, they are my devices, and I will look at them and check anything on them at any time. So, basically, for me, at least it's work, being an over-involved, overbearing parent is helpful because I could see easily, and I have seen how, what you're describing, some child whose parents are working and they don't have a lot of supervision, and that's where they're getting attention, and it seems to be that that, that is ripe, the kid playing on the Xbox all the time with the video games, and then someone comes in the chats and makes him a friend. So, I would hope our local PTAs and schools are aware of this, that you're a resource that could be available to them to help.
Yes, we have reached out, and as I said before, Palm Beach County has its own human trafficking department that also works with not just school personnel, but with parents, okay, as well as children, the minors themselves, talking to them what they should watch out for while they're on the internet. I mean, I mentioned this sex extortion, which is the latest form, you know, of trafficking going on, and the problem is, and I'm sure you may be aware, of going on some of these social media platforms, these apps, you don't know who you're communicating with. And so, yes, we do talk to, to students as well.
You know, it's a very difficult, one of the many difficult conversations to, to have with your child with it. I know the, the airports do a really good job with it, it's things like that. I know there's a, and I don't know, Richard, if you know, there's a, a white house in West Palm Beach, and it's not just, you know, this is where they come in, but if you have workers that come in, this is a house you can go to in order to take advantage of the situation. So, I was just, when you had the pamphlets on, that made me think about our Park and Rec Department as well, because there are things like that, that you can't get information out there enough that somebody will do it, and I, I think the difficult part is also knowing the difference of, is when your child's going through those phases of becoming a teenager, a lot of the moodiness or withdrawal and things like that, it's kinda hard to determine, is it hormonal, or is it, you know, something more sinister? So, thank you very much for the work that you do, and it is very difficult, especially, you know, as a mother, I understand.
Searching that phone.
Yeah, we just had this conversation.
Any other questions, comments, no? Thank you again so much.
Thank you once again for having me.
Appreciate you being here and the information you shared with us, and keep doing a good job, it seems like you guys are really working at this. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now, I guess we're ready for the.
The consent agenda.
I, I have no comment cards from the public on items on the consent agenda. And we said there was no hands raised still?
No.
All right, so I'm closing public comment on the consent agenda.
Okay, ma'am.
May I please present it?
Thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of November 16th, 2023, and council regular meeting of December 7th, 2023. Two, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute the 2024 Municipal Election Processing Equipment Use and Election Services Agreement by and between the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections Office and the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Three, approval of a special event permit for House Bond Skate to hold a skateboarding event at Preservation Park located at 100 Sweet Bay Lane on Saturday, January 27th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Four, approval of six special event permits for Our Lady, Queen of the Apostles Catholic Church to hold a fish fry at 100 Crestwood Boulevard on February 16th, February 23rd, March 1st, March 8th, March 15th, and March 22nd, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Five, ratification of consultant services authorization, number 04, with Erdman Anthony to provide municipal engineering services for Bridge Slope Stabilization Project PW1806. The cost for said services shall not exceed $137,080. Six, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a professional services agreement for architectural design services with REG Architects Incorporated for various projects in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Seven, approval and adoption of resolution number 2401, a resolution of the village council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, expressing support for the extension and continuation of the Palm Beach County One-Cent Sales Sur Tax to fund local infrastructure projects through December 31st, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Ma'am, I make a motion to pull Consent Agenda item number seven.
Okay. Any other items? All right, so I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any appeals? I have no appeals, Diane, please let the record show that the Consent Agenda items 1, 2, 6 were approved, and we're gonna have discussion on item number seven.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna have the village manager give a, a brief synopsis of it and stuff?
Sure.
Okay. Three minutes, okay. This resolution is to express our support for the extension of and continuation of the Palm Beach County One-Cent Sales Sur Tax to fund local infrastructure. In 2016, the voters of Palm Beach County approved an increase in this tax. It went effective January 1st, 2017, and will automatically sunset upon either occurrence of either December 31st, 2026, or generating 2.7 billion. It does look like the 2.7 billion will come before the 10th year, and therefore will stop it nine years. The way it currently is set up, the one cent is 50% goes to Palm Beach County School Board, 30% to Palm Beach County, and 20% to the 39 municipalities. This resolution is only showing support to the county and showing our interest in it being continued. Many things would have to happen if the county chose to continue it. One of them would be to, to either agree to put it on or ask the cities to do a, an exact resolution with that more than 50% of the population, and this is only to get, only to put it on the ballot for voters to vote or not vote for it.
Okay.
And we have used, we have, we have, in the, since 2016 or 17, we've collected $21 million. We used it for this building, we're using it for the rec center, we used it for the new pavilions down at Commons Park, we've used it, or using it for the new park out at Crestwood Boulevard. All of our, all of our use has been in capital projects.
I didn't realize we did use funds from that for this, this project.
Some, yes.
Okay. That's it?
That's all I have, that, what we're, what we're, what we're looking for is, and 21 cities, I think, have already passed this same resolution, and the, the question keeps coming up, are we doing it or not? And that's why it's ending up showing up here.
All right.
And just to say, you know, for the better part of 20 years, Palm Beach County residents have been paying that extra 1% sales tax, so although I think in the future it would be a good idea, I, I think it just needs to sunset for a little bit and give people some breathing room. We talk about affordability and lack thereof. However, I do think that residents should be able to vote on it, I think it's just.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
But it's not just residents, anybody who does business here, out of town, they pay the 1% too.
Everyone pays the 1%, correct, in the sales tax, yes. It's just voting on it, though, for the extension, yeah.
Well, that, we're just saying from a, you know, fiscal standpoint. Well, that, we're just saying from a, you know, fiscal standpoint, we think if you're going to continue it, fine. But there has to be a process where the voters get to, yeah, let their opinion be known. I agree with that, yes. So if there are no further, go ahead, question?
I mentioned to you, I've been a manager, but, you know, looking forward, it's difficult to figure out, well, how would we use that money going forward? Another way to look at it, though, is, so if this sun sets. And getting into the voters, I agree, totally the right thing to do. But insofar as discussion about going forward, asking the question, well, what's going to be the case if we, this revenue stream ceases? So we've had $21 million over an eight-year period of time, almost nine years. If this is no longer coming, we're going to then still have needs for capital improvements and things of that nature. What will that mean to us going forward? Just for a little information.
Well, we have not used ad valorem tax base to pay for capital in the last 20 years. We have had the utility sale proceeds that we have used. We have had the benefit of the ARPA money that we still have and are currently using, and that will end in 2026. And what we'll, we will go back to using the, well, we're still using it. We're just not using it at the, the amount that we were using it, and that's the utility sale proceeds. If you remember some time ago, the council voted to use two and a half million dollars a year from the utility sale proceeds. We have not needed to use that two and a half million dollars since we, since this fund was here. We still use some of it, but not, not at the tune of two and a half million. We would go back to using it at least at the tune of two and a half million. And then, and then when that's gone, we'll go back to using ad valorem tax base.
And again, it is, as Selena said, it's a, it's a tax burden that, and this particular time is a bit more challenging with inflation and the cost of living, especially here in Palm Beach County. So these are all considerations which, when it comes time for this to be considered by the voting public, probably need to be fleshed out and better understood, so.
Okay. Yeah, good. Okay.
No comment. I'm good.
No further comments or questions, then I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number seven.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, let the record show that consent agenda item number seven was also approved 5-0. And with that, I'm going to move to our regular agenda item number one, which is discussion and consideration of whether to revise the village code, the village's code of ordinances to allow large family childcare homes within the village's residential zoning districts, where the village code currently only allows family childcare homes with a maximum of six children. So, Brett?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. A little brief history. At the December 7th, 2023 village council meeting, public comment was made by a resident related to the village's restriction on the number of children currently allowed within the family childcare homes within the village and potentially in consistency with the Palm Beach County regulations, which were purported to allow more children. A discussion ensued and the village council directed staff to bring forth at the next village council meeting on January 18th, additional information regarding family childcare homes and large family childcare homes and how they are regulated by the county and other municipalities. The Florida Department of Health regulates and licenses family daycare homes and licenses large childcare homes in 62 of the Florida 67 counties. Five counties have decided either by statute or by adoption of a local ordinance or resolution to designate a local licensing authority to regulate childcare providers in their counties. Palm Beach County is one of these five counties. The Florida Department of Health in Palm Beach County is a county department tasked with the regulation and licensing of family childcare homes and large childcare homes. Local licensing agencies may use the same or different procedures to implement local licensing standards, which must have been determined by the state to meet the, meet or exceed the state's minimum licensing standards. Local regulation. With regard to local regulation, Attorney General Opinion 2003-34 addressed the question of whether certain sections of Florida statutes preempt local regulation of family daycare, family daycare facilities. The AG held that Sections 166.0445 and 402.301, 0.319, and on and on. A Florida stat, statute do not preempt local regulation of family daycare facilities. Per the AGO, quote, "Based on the clear expression of the legislature and the Florida Childcare Licensing Act, it is in my opinion that Sections 402.301 and 402.319 are the minimum standards that do not preempt more stringent local regulation of the matters addressed herein," end quote. The AGO opined that, quote, "Review of this statutory scheme demonstrates that the legislature, consistent with these standards, to be the minimum standards and recognize the authority of local governments to the legislature in this area." The only preemption that exists relative to these facilities is in Section 166.044, which states that, quote, "The operation of a residence as a family daycare home, as defined by law, registered or licensed with the Department of Children and Families shall constitute a valid residential use for purpose of any local zoning regulations. And no such regulation shall require the owner, operator of such family daycare home to obtain any special exception or use permit or waiver or to pay any special fee in excess of $50 to operate in an area zoned for residential uses." There are different requirements for childcare homes and large care homes. Family childcare homes and large childcare homes have generally the same definition. The main distinction is that the maximum capacity for a family care home is six here in Palm Beach County, while large family care homes may care up to 12 children here in Palm Beach County. To qualify and become licensed as a large childcare facility, a provider must successfully operate for at least two years as a family childcare home at the location where they wish to operate as a large family childcare home. Other distinctions between the two types of family childcare homes pertain to staffing requirements. So the large family childcare home have the same requirements of the family childcare homes, those smaller ones. But so there are additional requirements for the, for the 12, the large family childcare homes. And they, they pertain to staffing requirements, background screening, staff training, supervision of children, health and safety.
These are the additional requirements?
There's, there's a bunch of different additional requirements under these topics, basically. I didn't want to go through. Village staff does not support revision to the village code to allow large family childcare homes within the village's residential areas. A review of both types of childcare homes within Palm Beach County resulted in less than 5% of them being large family childcare homes. Large family childcare homes is not the norm in Palm Beach County, and the village's code is consistent with other municipalities within Palm Beach County. SAS feels as though large family childcare homes are more closely related to a commercial use, and past priorities have been to prevent commercial encroachment into the village's residential areas. And staff also believes that allowing only the family childcare homes with six or fewer children is consistent with many, again, many other municipalities within Palm Beach County. And with that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Bradford. We're going to take some comments. I do have a comment card from the public. Any prior comments on this agenda item?
No, Mayor.
Ray, any hands raised?
No, Mayor.
Okay, so we have a comment from Martha Smith. Please come.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ms. Martha again for the large family daycare. And I think I spoke with Ray concerning the large family daycare. And he was telling me about, I only could keep six. But when I did my inspection for the health department, they keep asking me, why can't I do six when you can do 12? And I didn't know, like I told y'all the last time, I didn't know. If I would have known, I couldn't do six. I don't think I would have moved here because I brought my business with me. And I had to drop it because I can only keep six when you can do 12. But Village of Royal Palm, I only want to say six.
Especially coming from, well, this is my mom. And I've been doing it for 10 years too. But now in Village of Royal Palm, we're also, coming from the glade. Coming from the glade, her space was even smaller, and she had a large family. And the thing about, another thing about going large is that you, instead of so many families have to drive outside of their communities for childcare, and they don't know that you can get it right in your community. And some of the programs that they offer, even if you are working parent, like first responders, they offer sometime 100% free daycare and a lot of resources for kids with different disabilities, everything. And you get more resources when you are in some of these programs. But it, I know that they say like the traffic and stuff like that. But if you live in the area and you, everybody have to drive so far, like even one of her parents that works at, when she worked at St. Mary's, she never knew that it was, she can just drop her child off somewhere local instead of, you know, driving through traffic to wherever you work at. But it's just, it helps the community also. Because if you live in an area and it's, like even Royal Palm Beach High School, it's teachers and everything that needs care, and so many people look for care for infants. A lot of the schools don't offer daycare for infants. You have to be two-year-old, two-years-old and potty trained. So it helps the community also. It's, you're not, all 12 parents are not going to show up at the same time. Everybody don't have the same schedule. Sometimes even some of the younger, the younger teenagers that have had kids and going through so much and they get into childcare programs or whatever programs at the high school, they still have childcare locally. Because Amy Crease or something like that, they provide 100% daycare for them and some of the teachers. It depends. But having a six is like cutting your income in half because it's, you need it as far as to live. The cost of living is way more now. And I don't think she would have relocated to Royal, the Village of Royal Palm. You, you couldn't do that for your business because it, it seems like a lot. But you have more than, you're required to have more than a person that works in the center. A lot of times they just have their 40 hours. You are constantly training through DCF or anybody from Tallahassee. We do a lot of trainings with early head start. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but they constantly provide us with trainings to help the families when a lot of the centers don't even have any of that.
Okay. I, I hear the point in the case you're making about the need for childcare in the community. What I'd like to do is, is open the floor. Any further questions from members on council?
Terrica, I'm sorry. My name is Terrica Clark.
Where was your facility before? It was a large facility. Was it in West Palm or unincorporated county?
It was Palm Beach County. It was large.
It was in the uncor, unincorporated county.
Palm Beach County.
And how long were you at that address?
With my daycare?
How long was the daycare operating, the large daycare at that address?
Oh, I was actually like the second person in Palm Beach County. So I've been doing it for 22 years.
Okay, so you've been at the same location, doing the same thing for a couple decades?
Yeah.
Okay.
He was asking where you came from. She came from Pahokee.
I came from Pahokee. And I did it after 20 years.
Feet closer to the.
In Pahokee, and I was a large family daycare home for 20 years. So now I'm here, six, by to six.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Just for clarification, what you said in the very beginning, when the county came in to do the health, the inspection, when the health inspector came in to do the inspection, did they say, how come you don't have 12 children? Why are you not applying for a large? Or did, because they came to do the inspection. Okay, I just didn't understand what you said in the very beginning.
When they do, we, and like now I'm going to get inspection again. We do it like twice a year now. But when I opened up, they thought I was going to do 12 because I did, I closed my garage off and made my daycare. And it can hold up to 13 kids, but we're not allowed to have 13. We can have up to 12. And they was like, Ms. Martha, they're not going to give you 12? I say, that's what, see the village, they answered. But they say, well, we never heard of that. But it's Palm Beach County rules. You can have 12.
Well, we're not dealing with Palm Beach County rules. That's why when you were here before, I said, let us go back and look at where we are, where, what the rules are, what we're allowed to do at the city level. And we just got a report on that so that, we did do the research just to, you know, say, hey, here's where we are. Jeff, did you want to speak?
The only thing I was going to comment on was, it appears that we, the majority of the facilities like yours are clearly the six-child facilities in the county. So we're pretty consistent with that. And of course, our concern about impacting, and I, I know you know that because I heard what you said. Not likely all 12 are going to show up at the same time.
Yeah.
The concern would be more than not just your facility, but then others, and how many others, and that type of thing. So that's, that's kind of what, what occurs to me.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Martha, for, for bringing this to our attention. I'm curious, so when you were in Pahokee and you had 12 children, how many of those children are the same now in Royal Palm? How many of the same, how many of the children were you serving in Pahokee come out to Royal Palm for your services?
Oh, they, they don't come to Royal Palm. I have kids in this area now.
Right.
Yeah.
So are you charging the same that you charged in Pahokee?
Well, you know, it's up on the ELC. And most of the parents, they, they have a fee. It probably don't be that much because, you know, they're like, some of them low income, some of them pay private. And the ones that pay private, those are the ones that works out for. And I have a young lady, she works at St. Mary's. She live right here in Royal Palm Boulevard. And she was like, boy, where you come from? I wish we could have been found this because I have to drive so far. And I have to travel with my baby. But now I just drop my baby off and going on the road. And, you know, she pay her fee, but because she's private. But most of my kids are with the ELC and Head Start, and they pays their fee.
Okay. So I, I did a little research. I want to tell that you have been Gold Seal. It's the National Association for Family Childcare Accreditation. You should be charging full rate.
Yep. I do.
The daycare centers that are around here, for those people who aren't putting their children in family daycares, are charging between 1,300 and 1,500 a month. I'm guessing that you're not close to that.
See, my thing is, my kids mostly come from early head start and ELC.
Well, maybe you could split that.
And they think is, they pay a certain amount and they pay the rest. And them Gold Seal, and we charge them Gold Seal price too.
Yeah.
But with six kids, you still ain't going to make it.
Do you charge a registration fee?
Yes.
Okay, good. I would encourage you to charge more when you can.
Yeah. But you know, now these people can't pay for that.
But others can. Others can.
Yeah.
If I may clarify, actually, they, they have to deal with both village code and county code. As Bradford indicated in his presentation, Palm Beach County is one of the counties in the state that has created its own regulatory agency and so, with its own rules. I mean, the first thing that would have to happen clearly is that right now the village doesn't allow it, period. So the village would have to decide to change its zoning to allow the large use. If it did, then they would have to comply with the county's requirements for that, one of which is the two-year operation period. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Go back.
Yeah.
Thanks for clarifying it.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Appreciate that. Richard, did you want to say?
Yeah, I did pick up on, on Bradford's presentation, the two-year. Because it jumps to me that, okay, you have to do small two-year to get to a big two-year. So even if, that registered in my brain as, well, even if you start today or when you started it, you still got to wait two years before you can go up to the 12, which, again, is my question. And I'm sure you don't know the answer, Keith, because it's got to be looked into. But she's been doing it for a long, long time and say, okay, for whatever reason, say the county came in and took her house, it hadn't been in. reason, say the county came in and took her house, it didn't mean in domain, could she move to another facility in the same jurisdiction? She's already been large cap for 15 years. Does she have to go back to the small again, or can she transfer it from being a large to another large within the same jurisdiction?
My understanding is that the purpose behind the two-year period, it, it is, it is specific to the location, because the idea is that, um, you start.
The impacts.
You start small, and, and it, it's not meant to be a, a scenario where you're bringing kids in from out of town. It's supposed to be serving the residential community within which the facility operates. So, that's my understanding as to why the county has that two-year rule, and it is site-specific to allow it to grow organically and, and serve the surrounding community. And Bradford, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that was.
So, my understanding would be if we decided to change our ordinance today, they'd still have to wait two years before they can get 12 children, is, is what I'm hearing.
If they just started, then yes, that, that would.
In rural Palm Beach?
Right, right.
And, and at this specific site that they're working out of now?
Right.
Okay. If, if she's got other information, I'll appreciate it.
Two years, um, I think they have it confused. The two years is when you first become licensed with Palm Beach County, you have two years before you go large.
No, it's two years from the place that you were operating from.
It's from a site, and I, that's how, okay.
This is kind of a moot point, to be honest with you, because.
It's important to me. I, I mean, I, this is something that I do, I do want to know. So, I, if I could hear from Bradford.
Yes, that question was asked by, to multiple people, and it all came back to, they have, that person, that individual, has to operate at that location.
At that location.
And be the operator of that facility at that location for two years.
At the location, okay.
Listen, I, I really under, I, I understand the point you were making about the, the need for this service within communities, and we certainly appreciate that. But one of the things, if you recall, I wanted us to do, I asked, when did we put this ordinance in place? It was quite a number of years ago. And what we really had to do was review where we are today, and what were the rationale behind saying six would be the limit. That rationale has not changed. If anything, it's gotten even stronger, that we make decisions based on what we perceive to be the impacts on our, our local communities. And I don't see us changing our, our, uh, ordinance to anything from what it is now. And I know that's not what you wanted to hear, but we did take the time, and we did do the due diligence to really understand, you know, how this ordinance was created, and what are the real concerns that we need to look at. And we have to look at the concerns of continuing with the continuity within our communities, that these types of facilities would be limited to six. So, we're not gonna be changing our ordinance. So, what it means to you is, and I'm, I appreciate the points that, that Vice Mayor, uh, Radoski brought up. She kind of was talking about, well, yeah, you, you're working with this number of children, you know, can you look at what your fees are to try to, you know, address, because you indicated you have some expenses, and you, you know, this was gonna make a difference in your expense posture. So, I think that was a very, I don't, you know, if there's anything they can do there, but I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, so the question, I think, becomes for you, is, do you want to continue to operate out of Royal Palm Beach with six children, or do you want to go someplace else where, uh, their, their rules are different?
You gonna buy me another house?
No, ma'am, I'm not.
Yeah. You say if I want to go somewhere else, so that mean you gonna get another house?
I'm just letting you know, okay.
Yeah, you gotta say it another way. If I want to go somewhere else, I get another house.
Your business decision is to continue to do business in the village, under the guy, under the, the rules that we have in place, or that's the only other option. That's what I'm trying to say to you.
Ms., Ms. Mayor, if I could, because I, I kind of have a different take or life experience on this, because I had a job that I'm working now, but I really loved it. And in 2006, 2007, guess what? I had two young children, and they had to go to daycare. And guess what? I had to leave the job that I loved so much, because I'm the, I was the primary wage earner. I had to go leave because of the cost of daycare to pay for my kids. Now, if something like you was in the area, then maybe it could've made a difference to me. So, my thought is, if we have the six ordinance, I don't see an issue with, okay, why not adopt the county? And unfortunately for you, you'd, you'd be stuck at six for two years, but then after two years.
So, what if I say?
Possibly go to, no, I'm, I'm just telling you my, my position, because I understand where you're coming from. And I did run into a situation where it, it directly impacted my life tremendously. And there's not a, a ton of home daycares here in rural Palm Beach. We have barely a dozen, if a dozen. So, if this ordinance is followed to copy the county, and guess what? If it becomes a problem with traffic, or we have any problems with it, then we also have the opportunity to change that, and not, like, if you're the first one, and you're the one having it, and everything goes fine, but then a bunch of other people come in after, and then it becomes a problem, then we may, to me, now this is just me speaking, it makes sense to, to shrink it back to, as the mayor said, this is what it's been for a while. However, you know, I understand and agree that, you know, we're trying to keep commercial activities out of residential neighborhoods, but I don't have a problem personally with looking at the county ordinance and adopting it for rural Palm Beach at this point.
But the thing is, a lot of people don't understand, because they're not working in daycare, and they don't understand what it does to the community. So, there's a lot of issues with it.
Thank you.
Actually, piggybacking on what Councilman Valenta said, if, um, Mr. Davis could give us a perspective on if that were the path that we went on, what would that mean for future, for businesses? Let's say that, um, Mrs. Smith is the first one, and then you have the other, what are there, about half a dozen Bradford in the village?
But it don't work like that. You have to get a proof.
11. So, there are 11 of them that are here. If all 11 of them then went to 12, and it became an issue, because then I'm, I'm thinking about, we did have an incident where there was an individual giving swim lessons in her backyard, and all of the, her, her neighbors came in and had a concern with it, where we had to tell her she had to cease doing her business in her backyard, because her neighbors then did, um, have an issue with it. So, I just want to know, if we did go down that path, what does that mean for the 11 facilities, home daycares in?
So, the, the swimming is a little different, because I don't think that that was allowed in the first place. And, and your ex, so that was, you're able to stop that. In, in this case, if the village was to change its code, allow the large family, uh, care to, to come into existence, and one or more facilities came into existence lawfully, and operated lawfully under our code, and, and the county's regulatory, uh, and then the village decided this is not working, we're gonna repeal our ordinance, though you would stop any more from coming in, but the ones that are there would be legal, non-conforming uses, and they, they would be able to remain until such time as the use was abandoned, just like any other non-conforming use.
Thank you.
Comments, questions?
I'll, I'll just share my experience too. It was almost the same, same as yours, Richard, except that I pulled my children from a 12-person daycare, because I wanted them to be in a smaller setting. I wanted them to get more attention. I wanted them to be in a, you know, six-child setting. So, it can go either way, right?
So, where does this leave us, Keith? How do we, I, I wasn't looking to take a vote, because if we're not going to modify our ordinance, there was no need to vote.
Well, the agenda item is couched as discussion and consideration. And, and, you know, we brought you back the information. Um, if there was council direction to draft something, that would require a motion, um, that would be, have to be approved. Uh, if somebody wanted to make a motion to maintain the status quo, somebody could, could do that. If there's general council consensus based on the discussion, not to do anything, um, I would accept consensus if, if all five of you are of a like mind. I'm not sure that that's the case.
Not sure either.
Yeah.
How about this? This should make it easy. I'll make a motion to direct the staff to, um, how would I say, look into, or look into the process of adopting the county's ordinance.
They already did that. That's, that's the same direction we gave them with the last meeting.
No, that, I'm asking them to basically put an agenda item on that, whether we want to adopt the county's ordinance or not.
Are you asking us to prepare?
No, we would be cha, we, all we'd have to do is, is do it.
We'd have to change our ordinance.
All we have to do is amendment to our existing ordinance. So, what we'd bring back to you is a zoning amendment to change our current code to allow up to 12. That's all we would need to do. We don't have to adopt anything, we don't have to adopt the county or anything like that. They, they, the county regulates it, county will handle that. All we have to do is change it, change in our code, and we bring it back to you for two readings. We'd advertise it for minimum of 15 days.
LPA hearing would be required.
It'd have to go to the, the land use, the, the.
Okay.
And the zoning board, and it'd be a zoning change.
I'll make that motion then.
And two readings.
So, a motion first of all, at this point. But what motion are you trying to make?
To change the ordinance to allow for up to 12.
May I?
Okay.
Okay.
You made, you made a motion. Is there a second for that motion?
Right.
There's no second for that motion, so the motion failed.
So, that's it.
But may I? What I'm thinking, though, is, is this something, then, that we can discuss during a strategic planning session, and fully have an open conversation about it, then, if this is, because if we do have several council members that are going one way, some are going a different way, if we want to fully explore it, then.
We just had a motion fail on this.
Yeah, for the record, the motion did die for lack of a second. In terms of what you discussed, the strategic planning, that's really up to you guys.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, the motion failed. So, there's no action to be taken, and there's no.
And no actions required. If there's no action to be taken, then we're finished with the agenda item for tonight.
All right, so that's where we are.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All righty.
Okay. Moving on to regular agenda item number two, appointment of one resident to the Education Advisory Board, and that it would be you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sergio Herrera to the alternate seat with a term that expires this year. Uh, just a timing kind of a thing, but he certainly will be.
You say this year, you mean like in March?
So, we'll bring him on, give him a couple of meetings, and then, um, see if he still wants to be on the Education Advisory Board. I'm sure he will, so.
We have a motion is.
Second, please.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show. Agenda item R2 was approved 5-0. Uh, any other questions, comments, members of council? No? Thank you all. Welcome to 2024. And that, we'll move forward. You adjourn.